...meeting for Wednesday, November 19th. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take a moment of silence to reflect on our duties as town officials and also to continue praying for the safety of our military men and women, both overseas and in the United States. Thank you. In accordance with mass general laws, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the East Slant Metal Cable Access Television Network and also by the Board of Selectmen, and I have to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. Seeing no one, we will proceed. Tonight, we're interviewing three gentlemen for a police sergeant position, and, well, I'll hold off on explaining the process until they come in, because instead of reinventing the wheel, two seconds down the road, we'll just, we'll just proceed with the, with the process. And I believe the chief, if you can, you know, come on up. I was gonna say, put away your cellphone, but I won't say that. No words with friends. All right. Nick, why don't you bring in the first candidate? What's that? We're gonna do all nine of them. Yeah, we'll just go in order.
Okay. Chief started, right?
Yes. How are you?
Not bad, hanging in there.
That's good. I was wondering who was covering the town today, because everybody's here.
I'm a day shift guy.
There you go. What we're gonna do is, we've actually got nine questions. A tenth isn't really a question, but what we'll do is, we're gonna go in order, and we'll start with the chief, and we'll just each ask you a question, and we'll go around basically two point two-five times, or something like that, so. So I'll refer to the chief to ask the first question.
Jason, if you had a son or a daughter in trouble with the police, how would you handle the situation?
If I had a son or daughter in trouble with the police, I would obviously, I would try to talk to my, my child first, but I would probably go to a, another fellow employee of the same rank and ask them to intervene, so it doesn't look like I clouded the issue, whether right or wrong. If my child wasn't wrong, there's just no doubt about it that I would see to correct it, and if, if it went further as far as criminal charges, it is what it is. Kind of make your bed, you're kinda lying in it.
Sorry. I didn't take shorthand, obviously. What makes you the better candidate for sergeant than the other two candidates?
I believe the other two candidates are, they're very good police officers, I work with them, and almost any better, I say that, I mean, the more qualified. I think when, when you look for a management's position, you're promoting somebody, you look for education, you look for experience, you look for training, and I think of those three categories above and beyond everyone.
Thank you.
All right. How would you improve your shift to perform better and safer?
As far as improving better, I've seen some of the newer guys, when they come on, depending on who they're assigned with, sometimes I feel like they're not getting all the information they should. I usually try to ask the supervisor if I can ride with them, and just my own perspective, and just give them the basics of what they need to do. I always have to take out their notebook, and, you know, there's, we operate around a lot of rules and everything, but sometimes it's just the basics that they need to know, and every day if they're in there alone, and there's no one else to help them out, and they're on a desk, and the phone's going crazy, and I want, and so they can kind of refer to it. Safer part, just, you know, just, just the basics, just to be always alert of the other environments they're surrounding. Basically, what they learn at academy, I mean, that's always kind of my whole career is the basics, the basics, the basics, and if you stick with those and what you learn from day one, then you'll be in good shape.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chase, as a sergeant in decision-making, when going on a call, what criteria would you use to make your decision?
I'd have to see as far as the experience level of the other officers, I think that's a big thing. I'm on day shift now, supervisors don't come out a lot unless it's a real critical incident. The guys on third shift, they're newer, most of them are newer, so if it's, if it's anything we're in arrest, me coming to play, because you have search and seizure, you may have constitutional rights, you wanna make sure everything's in order, so, something that's of serious nature, and maybe not even that serious, if I think it's gonna lead to arrest, I would go on a call. I may not be right there, but I may be in the background, just to make sure, you know, that everything's done right, and they don't get in trouble, and I don't get in trouble either.
Thank you.
Two more words. Jason, where do you see yourself in five years?
In five years, hopefully, I'll be a sergeant, and depending on, if we ever add another rank here, possibly lieutenant, or maybe unapplying for a chief's position somewhere.
That was too fast, huh?
I talked.
Don't apologize for that. Okay. What is the most knowledge that you bring to the table?
The most knowledge that I think I've been to the table, again, is, is my training. I've gotten numerous, I'll give you my, my resume later. I have fifteen years, over fifteen years of experience, and I have a bachelor's and a master's of criminal justice administration. I think if I fall back on all those, I think that I would be in good shape.
I'm sorry, what is your master's in?
Criminal justice administration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Working in a small town, there's a good chance that you will interact with someone you know or may have grown up with. How will you handle the situation? And I was nice when I said interact, so.
You know, the great thing about us, about our job is that we have a discretion, and I think you have to handle it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, sometimes you may wanna help a friend out, and sometimes, again, you may have to have another supervisor intervene if it's, if it's gonna be a conflict of interest. I mean, sometimes, you know, you may, you may help somebody out, you may take care of them, but that doesn't mean that you wouldn't help a stranger out, and it's been done in the past. So again, it's a case-by-case basis, you know, I'm not gonna put my, my career on the line, my family, my income, to save somebody, but I will help somebody out if I can. Again, we have a lot of discretion, that's what's great about this job.
Thanks.
Chase, as you know, this is a leadership position. How would you welcome, monitor, and mentor an unpopular recruit who is new to our East Slant Metal Police Department?
How I would handle it is, I would take him aside, and just give him a little of my life experiences, situations I've been in, where I was the new guy, and, you know, sometimes the new guys, the, the older guys feel threatened, and older guys, and all senior people feel threatened. Take him aside, explain, you know, explain how we kind of work, and just try to give them the highlights of our job, and, you know, let them, leave an open door, if they need to come to us, or me, rather, need to come to me, and just talk things out, and if they get frustrated, and they think there's a problem, they come to me, and if there's a problem with another officer, you know, I would intervene and say, hey, you know, we oughta work together, we're a small department, and we worked together for thirty years, probably, you know, just, just try to work things out.
Good, thank you.
Jason, what is one way that you would foster positive morale with other officers in the department? And how do you create an inclusive environment?
Foster a positive relationship within the department, I think it kind of goes shift by shift. I think each shift has its little idiosyncrasies, and sometimes, different shifts, you know, they do different things, but try to do things together, hang out, you know, play a sport, maybe work out. You know, there's a lot of guys who aren't hunting, you know, some of us do that together. Things that we have, like, in common, that's how I would, or do that.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else you wish to add?
Just like to thank you for your time, just, when you consider me, I just wanna let you know that, you know, I've taken this test in the past, I've come up short, this time, I was one of the top scorers. I studied for a long time, not a great test taker, I studied for a good solid seven months, and I studied every day, I just, just, just to get it, and that's how I had to do it. But if I think, once you look over my resume, and if you look over my folder, and you just see the accomplishments I've had in the department, and, and everything I've done, from the beginning of the academy, I was a squad leader in the academy, and I've been trying to be a leader since. I've taken every opportunity, every course I can, I've taken on some additional duties within the department, and it's listed again in my resume, and I've gone to school to further my education, so when I got to this point, you know, hopefully, I would be the candidate who has the highest education, and maybe the most experience at that point in time.
Great. Thank you.
Did you get my resume real quick?
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm not really using the number system, I'm just reviewing, I'm gonna get an idea. If you wanna do that, you can, yeah.
We'll have time to review some of this after, right?
Yeah, we'll have a minute, too. All right, Nick. Chief outside?
Yes, sir.
Bill?
Yep.
Why don't you bring in the second candidate? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. How are you tonight?
Doing very well.
That's good. What we're gonna do is, we've got basically nine questions, and then a chance for you to, to tell us anything else you wanna tell us. So we're gonna go in order, starting with the chief, and we're just gonna go in rotation and ask you the questions, and go from there.
Dan, if you had a son or a daughter in trouble with the police, how would you handle the situation?
Well, first thing I would do is try to contact the police department, see what's going on. I would just ask, just, know what is going on, basically, and what the consequences would be. There's really not much else I could do if he was, you know, in trouble with the police, whether it was this, inside this town, or I don't know if it's outside of town, or it wouldn't really make much of a difference, but the first thing I would absolutely do is contact them and figure out what to do to get the resolution. After that, I, if it's through criminal matters, it would go through the court process, and hopefully it would be resolved quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Dan.
Hello.
What makes you the better candidate for sergeant than the other two candidates?
Oh, well, why I think that I'm a most qualified candidate to be a sergeant would be the fact that, through my experience as a police officer, it would be through other avenues. For instance, when I was elected to the school committee, I had a few leadership roles there, being a part of subcommittees, being the chairman and vice chair one year each, and basically being a community leader there. Also, while I was in college, I also coached cross-country and track, and I mentored young adults, and helped them build their confidence, and I also helped train them in the sports that they were doing, whether it was track, cross-country, or any of the field events.
Thank you.
All righty. Dan, how would you improve your shift to perform better and safer?
The shift that I'm on currently is the three-to-eleven shift, would be the second shift. From the two shifts that I've worked most of the time, which was third shift for approximately six and a half years or so, and then second shift for about a year and a half, I would say the first and foremost to improve the second shift would be to add another patrolman, if possible. I know that there are budgetary constraints, but I mean, that would certainly be very, very helpful, because there are times, you're just going from call to call, and there's no break. I mean, sometimes there's even calls waiting, and you never want that to happen, especially in East Slant Metal. Another good quality thing that we could hopefully do, but again, due to budget problems, would be possibly adding a detective bureau position. So, the first initial responders, the patrolmen, won't get tied up for several hours at one, at one call. For instance, if there's a house break, or if there's a major accident that needs to have a lot of different, you know, photos taken, and measurements made, things like that. So I would, I would do everything I could to add to this shift itself, through patrol and through detectives.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, Dan, as a sergeant in a decision-making when going on a call, what criteria would you use to make your decision?
The criteria that I would use to make my decision, on the way to a call or at the call?
Yeah, at the call.
At the call. Well, first, I'd get all the information I could from all the patrolmen who were there prior to me and after me, and I would certainly get their input as well. The type of sergeant that I would like to be is one that is more open-minded, and can, I myself, I've already seen some of the kids who just came out of the academy, they know a few of the things that I either forgot, because I haven't used in a while, or they, they're updated a little more accurately with the laws, because sometimes laws change, and sometimes they're amended, and you gotta get everybody's side of what's going on. I'd make my decision through what the patrolmen told me, and what they think as well.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Dan, where do you see yourself in five years?
Five years? Hopefully still here. No, I certainly see myself still working for the town of East Slant Metal. The town of East Slant Metal absolutely has been, like, the heart of where I've been living, my family, and it feels good just to be here. This town's given me many opportunities, when the town elected me onto the school committee, when the school, when I was a teenager, allowed me to be a track and cross-country coach. I owe a lot to this town, and I know that, I certainly see myself being here in five years, hopefully still being a part of the department as a supervisor, but that's not my decision.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
What is the most knowledge that you bring to the table?
The most knowledge? I would say through my training, experience of just over seven years, that I would say that the most knowledge that I actually have is through probably the criminal laws itself. I'm certainly not the most knowledgeable out of everyone with that, sometimes they're supervisors or guys who have been on the job longer, but when newer, newer police officers or, you know, the younger guys are dealing with an incident, sometimes they come to me and some other senior officers and say, hey, what do you think is going on with this? Do you think we could charge him with that? Do you think, you know, this was the crime? So I would say, the knowledge of actual, you know, possible crimes that actually occurred would be one of my strongest suits.
Thank you.
Dan, working in a small town, there's a good chance that you will interact with someone you know or may have grown up with. How will you handle the situation?
As a matter of fact, I have had to do with that. I won't go too in-depth with that itself.
Okay.
But when that has happened, I try not to take the lead with that, because there could be some sort of bias, or somebody might think there was some sort of bias, so thankfully, there's other officers that can take the lead with what's going on, and I can assist them in any way that they feel appropriate, whether it's family or if it's friends.
All right, great. Thank you.
Dan, as you know, this is a leadership position. How would you welcome, monitor, and mentor an unpopular recruit who is new to our East Slant Metal Police Department?
How would I do that?
Yeah.
Well?
Monitor and mentor him?
Well, I would do it the same way that anybody else deserves it. I mean, some people could say that maybe I wasn't a very welcome recruit because of my father, but, you know, I think everybody deserves a fair shake, and I would certainly try to keep an eye on that person, just to make sure that they continue to do the right thing, so they can keep going in the right direction, so they can earn the respect of the other people that aren't ready to, to accept them, or however, you know, they, they feel, you know? Because sometimes it takes time, sometimes people have to prove themselves a bit more, so you'd certainly give them a little extra help to make sure that they can get through it.
Good. Thank you.
Dan, what is one way that you would foster positive morale with other officers in the department? And how do you create an inclusive environment?
Well, one of the ways that you could actually create an inclusive environment is, sometimes if you could do something after work, and, you know, you invite everyone. You certainly don't just say, ah, let's just invite this guy or this guy. You bring everybody together, whether it, no matter what's going on. I think that would certainly help with morale, especially within the shifts themselves, because my entire life, I never worked a regular nine-to-five job, so when I worked second shift, even at the Friendly's plant, after work, we'd all go out together, we'd either shoot pool, or go out and watch a sports event, whether it's a baseball game or a football game, and then, because those are the people that you actually get to interact with. You know, there's other guys that work different shifts that maybe you don't see them after work, but one of the ways to keep people inclusive, especially within your shift, is to do something outside of work itself. Now, in the workplace itself, you would certainly try to address any issue that would make somebody feel uncomfortable, or somebody that thinks that's, there's something wrong. I would try to address it, find out what the problem is, and then try to remedy or resolve it the best way that I could.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Excuse me, do you have anything you wish to add?
Well, I would just like to add, thank you for this opportunity. I've been working very hard to try to reach this goal, this has been a goal of mine since I was a kid, you know, playing cops and robbers. Now I get paid to play cops and robbers, and, you know, I'm just very happy to even be here. It's, it's just a wonderful chance and opportunity for me, and I'd like to thank you guys.
All right. Well, thank you. When I hear the clicking stuff, I'll know it's time to move on.
I know, but I, I do this faster than I write, so.
Not me. Anything else, sir?
Yeah.
To you?
Yes, sir.
Billy?
Jim, Michael.
The difference is how, just a little bit of a work experience, mostly outside of the, I'm still here, so.
Thank you.
Build a more background.
All right. Thanks, man. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you, sir.
That's good. All right. What, what's gonna happen is, we have nine questions, and then last thing is an opportunity for you to say anything else you'd like to say. And we're just gonna go in order from the chief, and we're gonna go around twice, and, a little more than twice, and, you know, obviously, just relax, and, and we'll proceed.
That was for an account more, more than twice.
Hey.
Michael, if you had a son or daughter in trouble with the police, how would you handle the situation?
Well, obviously, I, you're kinda tempted to try to help your own, your own kid, but you kinda have to let things play out, use it as a learning lesson for, for him or her, in my case. If it happened in town here, you'd obviously, I'd have to recoup, you know, get myself out of that situation, to, to not be in charge of any type of thing that might be going on with him, or. And then, yeah, I'd, I'd go through the courts and let it do what it's gonna do, and hopefully we're not in too big a trouble, and you can, they can use it as a learning lesson, and they can find out, because I think they might have a tendency to think that you're gonna get them out of trouble every time. My father was a police officer, and I think I was more scared of him when I was in the police, so.
Thank you.
Oh, that's priceless. I'm so sorry, Michael, forgive me. What makes you a better candidate for this, for sergeant than the other two candidates?
Well, I, I can't personally speak to their experience, but I know that I personally have had years, a couple of, you know, multiple years of experience in leadership roles, mostly, almost entirely through the military. I've been, I've been in army reserves for ten years, I just got out last December, so I've been out for a year and a couple days. And seven of those years, I was an NCO, sergeant, then subsequently a staff sergeant. I've been on three deployments, where I was in charge of other soldiers, one to Africa, two were combat deployments, one to Iraq, one to Afghanistan, both of those as NCOs, so I've had multiple trainings through the military about leadership, doing advanced leadership courses, and things of that nature, so I got to why, I just have a lot of experience in different styles of leadership, and practically applying it, and working with different people to make a, everybody work as like a cohesive team, as opposed to, you know, having things fall apart. You always get conflicting personalities, especially in the military, police, there are a lot of type A-type people that wanna, wanna get in charge, and you're gonna have to get them to work as a team, as opposed to all wanting to be a bunch of chiefs.
We know you can only have one of those. I had to get even for the account. All right, Mike, how would you improve your shift to perform better and safer?
Well, me and your shift run a little bit more smoothly. I think it runs pretty well now. I think to be more effective, maybe put in a more standardized roll call, so people understand what has happened during the day, if anything significant has come up. Usually it's passed along, but maybe formalized it a little bit more. They have specific kinds of directed patrols, or goals that you want to accomplish on that, on that shift, as opposed to maybe just kind of cruising around, if there's a certain area where things might have happened, to make it a little bit more direct, a little bit more focused, give, give the patrolmen a little bit more direction on what specifically you want them to accomplish or to do on that shift, maybe focus your attention, or that way they don't kind of get lost in the loop.
Thank you. We need a stenographer.
Mike, as a sergeant, uh, as a sergeant, in decision-making, when going on a call, what criteria would you use to make your decision?
Well, I, I think very call-to-call, depending on, on the nature of it. Obviously, when you're going to a call, it's, um, you almost kinda wanna rehearse what you're gonna do in your head, kinda like if you're playing baseball, and you have a guy on first and second, you wanna know where you're gonna throw the ball, should the ball get hit to you, so. As you're going to the call, you wanna decide, or not decide, but at least play out what you think might happen, so when you get there, you're not necessarily, you're not fumbling around, trying to make decisions too much on the fly. But it, it varies so much from call to call that, like giving any one specific example, you know, depending on if it's a domestic, obviously, you know, how, how severe that might, thing might be, so. I don't, I don't know if I could answer that question more directly, if you wanna give an example, or?
Say you were, say you were going on, on a call, and, uh, you found kids out on their, bikes on someone's private property, doing burnouts and stuff.
Oh, like, uh, dirt bikes?
Yeah.
Well, if you could catch them in the woods, that'd be the first step. If they're kids, obviously you wanna, you know, take, take their bikes, contact their parents if they're doing house, contact the property owner, see if he wants to press charges, if he wants to trespass them. So in a case like that, you don't know if they do have permission to be out there or not until you speak with the property owner. But it's a lot of variables, and if they're younger kids, usually getting in touch with the parents is probably the most efficient and productive way to go. When they're young, you don't need to really be trying to screw up the rest of their younger adulthood pressing charges first thing unless, unless it has to go that way.
Thank you.
Almost there. Done, thank you.
Mike, where do you see yourself in five years?
Hopefully still working here. Uh, five years is not that long of time for me. I haven't, uh, been here too, too long, um, so I don't, I don't foresee myself going anywhere. I have a family here, I live in town, so I don't have any, any plans to go anywhere else. Hopefully, I'll be a sergeant here. If not, hopefully, I can, we would do another specialty if there, if any open up. But I suspect I'll be still up at 160. In the police department.
Okay. Excuse me. What is the most knowledge that you bring to the table?
Uh, well, I think probably my experience, like I said, in, in my leadership roles through the military, because I've, it's, it's been, it was ten years, and like I said, seven of it was directly supervising other people, which is, you know, what a sergeant does. You, you make sure your guys are trained as best as they can, so you can set them up for success. I've had tons of experience doing that. You know, I know there are people that have been this, working as a patrolman longer than me, but I don't think anybody's had quite as much time being in charge of other people as I have, where you have to make them perform as best they can, and you're responsible to somebody above you, and you have to shoulder that burden. If they're screwing up, it's obviously coming back on you. It's not necessarily their fault if they're not, you didn't set them up the right way. You know, if they're failing, obviously you're failing. So I have a lot of experience making sure that people have the ability to succeed in whatever their job happens to be, whether it's police officer, or in the military, or whatever.
What's that? Mike, working in a small town, there's a good chance that you will interact with someone you know or may have grown up with. How will you handle this situation?
Oh, it happens all the time. I grew up here, um, so I do know a lot of people in town, I do run into them. I don't really try to treat them any different than anyone else I run into, and I'm, I'm sure I, I probably do, um, but I think you gotta be cognizant of the fact that so many people do know you in town, especially when you did grow up here, and not put yourself in, in awkward situations that might put you in an ethical, you know, a, a situation where you might have to be questioning your own ethics. So, I, it's bound to happen, and it, it has, and I haven't let it get in my way so far, and it hasn't affected me negatively.
All right. Thank you.
Mike, as you know, this is a leadership position. How would you welcome, monitor, and mentor an unpopular recruit who is new to the East Long Middle Police Department?
Well, I think when you have a, any new person coming in, it's important to ensure that there's no, no bias, even though there might be, if he's, if, if there's a non-popular thing, or he maybe has a personality conflict with several other people on his shift. But the, the important thing, especially in a small group, and in the military, working in a small group, is to maintain, you know, people have their, their personal issues, but when you're at work, you have to maintain your professionalism, and you have to make that part of the, the culture of your shift, or your team, or however you wanna put it, um, because you can't let personal things get in the way of, of actually doing your job. If you have, um, and then importantly, if, if it, something like that, you have to ensure that that person is set up to succeed, and you're, you know, he's not getting set up by, uh, other people, or, or if he's on, you know, maybe if you have a personality conflict where you're not taking care of him as well as maybe you could, or you should be, you can't let that, that get in the way of your responsibilities as a supervisor.
Thank you.
Michael, what is one way that you would foster positive morale with other officers in the department? How do you create an inclusive environment?
Well, I think our, our department is, is pretty in, close, it's only because it's so small, probably, we, I mean, everybody knows everybody fairly well. To, to raise morale in, in our department, I mean, there's probably multiple ways that could happen. There's, there's a lot of people that are coming on new, you know, now, that are, they're newer, that are very motivated, looking for training opportunities, looking for, for specialty things to do. Giving them those opportunities, I think, will motivate them, make them work harder. Setting professional, you know, a little bit higher for professional standards, and holding people accountable, give them, you know, although can be a pain at first, eventually gives people a good sense of pride. Maintaining the professionalism at work and not letting personal things come into work is important, and, because if you get, start getting personal problems at work, it only degrades everything else that is happening, makes people less effective, they don't wanna come in, you know, because they don't wanna run into somebody that they're maybe not getting along with. If they don't have to worry about their personal issues with somebody at work, then they're gonna come and be a more effective, uh, officer.
Okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to, excuse me, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Um, I just hope you give me a, a fair consideration. I know that the other two candidates do have more time working in this particular department. I mean, I do have previous time at Western New England, um, and, uh, really, I, I got appointed here in 2010, but due to, uh, my deployment at Afghanistan, I missed out on a couple of years, but, you know, I wouldn't trade that away. I have had just, uh, extensive experience of, you know, leading other people, and I, I feel like that gives me a, a good base of knowledge to, to further my professional career, and hopefully, uh, be a leader to the patrolmen at the East Long Middle.
Thank you. Let's see, we got your resume? Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
All right. As usual, we have, we always have good candidates, and, and I must be getting old, because Mike is the first one that, I was a process of, I was part of the process of hiring, so. I've probably been here too long. But anyways, um, what I think we'd like to do now is take a, uh, what I'm suggesting, maybe a ten-minute recess, and then everyone can, you know, look at their notes and reflect on everything, and then we can get back and, and give our various opinions. So I'd like to make a motion for a ten-minute recess. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. What's that? We are back in session. Once again, as it is, seems like every time, we have a candidate, either for police officer or for sergeant or any position, we have wonderful candidates. We have a, we have a, as far as my, my opinion, a tremendous police force, and it's a credit to the town, and it's a credit to the officers. And, um, we had three great candidates here today. Now, um, I don't know if, as far as the process, I, I don't know if you want me to start, or if you folks wanna start. We've basically gone through a scoring system of one to five, with five being the best for each, each of the, uh, questions, and, um, and from that, and other information that we've gathered, then that's what we're, in theory, gonna make our decision on. So it's up to you folks, if you want me to start, or if you wanna start, or? You okay?
If, 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 just before we get started-
Yeah.
Something, uh, did slip my mind, and I just wanted to mention it. I did check with council. I was an elected official on school committee at the same time that one of our camp, that, Officer Manley was on the school committee. It will not affect what I'm doing, but I just feel like I do need to mention it. I was told I didn't need to, but I just wanna keep everything up at board.
Okay, great.
And I totally forgot about it until they said it during his interview, and I was like, "Oh, yeah."
Yeah, that's, that's good, you know, obviously, it's good to get it out there, and I'm-
Absolutely.
I know it wouldn't affect your, your decision, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I might as well start. Uh, once again, we had, we had three great, great candidates. Everyone's got a great resume. Um, they all bring different things, different skill sets and whatnot to the table. In reviewing my three candidates, based on my scoring system, for the most part, because most of their other information is already taken into consideration by civil service, if I have that correctly, um, my number-one candidate was Jason Guinepero. I don't know if you wanna do one, two, and three, or do you wanna just do one, and, because since the other two will be coming up, uh, on the list for the next sergeant, it might be a good idea not to do two and three, because I don't want people to think that we're biased towards any one, you know, any one of the two remaining people. That's, I don't know, does that make sense? Really? Actually said something to me? Okay. Could you call my wife? Anyways, um, but anyway, I mean, all joking aside, um, it was a very close, uh, it was only a couple of points difference between, actually, three or four points difference between all the candidates, but in, in my scoring system, uh, Jason came out first. Bill?
My number-one was Jason also, because, uh, you know, he has a master's degree in criminal justice, you know, and, uh, he definitely, he's a senior officer, adds more years, and seniority means a lot to me. And he's definitely experienced, and I, I think he'd make a good sergeant, but I gotta say the same thing, it's, it was tough picking, uh, between the three of them here. Even though one only had a couple of years here, he's still got a lot of experience, and he's definitely a good officer. But, um, that's why I made the pick, I did, I, you know, because, uh, he went to school and got his master's degree, and he's definitely qualified. And I liked some of the answers he gave. Uh, that's why I picked him.
Thanks.
Well, my first one was Dan Manley, however, um, the second one was the gentleman that you were describing. They, it was very, very close.
It was.
It was very close. It, um, came down to when the resume was presented, is when it came to, to my differential. Do I think that the gentleman, I think all of them could be a good sergeant, um, but certainly, um, I would not be opposed to, um, to Jason.
All right. Any, and, any additional comments from anybody? Yes.
Having a chance to go up to the police station-
And go over the information.
Which helped me out.
Yeah.
Uh, far as their background and stuff, and, you know, and the training they had. Because, you know, if you come into this blindly, it's, I, I just don't like picking someone if I don't know-
It's tough enough doing this the way it is, the, the process that it is, but you're right, when you have, when you have some more information, then it's certainly-
Thank you for putting that available to us.
I would ask that it be available earlier, next time, though. We can certainly talk about that, because we do have another one coming up.
All right. Um, in light of what everyone said, I'd like to make a motion to approve Jason Guinepero as the new sergeant for the East Long Middle Police Department. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The, the starting date would be December twenty-
Twenty-first?
Twentieth.
Okay. That's right, 'cause he had to back it up to the nineteenth, right? Rick did?
Right. Rick is done.
Okay. All right. Very good.
December what?
Twentieth.
December twentieth. That'll be the starting, his starting date as, let's just say sheriff, good Lord, as sergeant. And I must've come back two hundred years or something, but in any event, um, so that's good, and I wanna thank everybody for, for your hard work, as one, as I said a million times, and just said probably five minutes ago, that this is, it's always a tough process. The only good thing about the process is we, we always have such good candidates, and, uh, in one sense, it makes the job easier, and in another sense, it makes the job tougher because everyone, everyone sort of stands up, so. What's the usual process for notifying?
The candidates have leave of resignation.
Okay. Do you wanna-
Do you wanna give them a call, or to the board?
It's been done, uh, different ways.
If you like, uh-
We can keep these, uh-
Yeah, we'll keep those.
Whatever's the pleasure of the board. It's private, mate.
I, do you wanna tell Jason?
I'll, I'll call all three if you want.
Okay, yeah, why don't you do that? All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
And thank you for your help.
Appreciate it.
And now our audience leaves.
Goodness, thanks, good night.
Thank you, Chief. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Thanks, Chief.
I hope they got that on camera. All right. Next on our agenda, which hopefully we can get through this in fairly short order, but in any event, um, last night, we discussed with the capital planning committee in front of us, uh, three items, um, that they were looking for our guidance on as to whether we should present it to them through our department heads to be considered for a capital plan. First item is the town hall, and I have to say, I know we all went, and I'm gonna, I'm sort of throwing this out there to you folks, we all went to the presentation that the DPW, and, gave, and I was impressed. I mean, I, I, I thought it, it served, it was gonna serve a lot of purpose for the town. I thought it would help us out. I remember when, I know last night with, when the capital planning committee was there, uh, Mr. Caravetto was talking about the, the space study, and I believe the space study included doing all sorts of things to town hall, adding like two thousand square feet, and other things that had cost him, I wanna say, two million dollars. So they, they did have a plan that included town hall, and, um, I just thought that, that with all the work that was put into it by the, by the DPW and, and everyone, um, I thought it was a good plan. That's just my opinion. I'll open it up to what you folks say before we decide on whether we wanna bring it forward.
I also thought it was a, a good plan. Um, I'm very concerned about our donors not being ADA compliant. I am concerned, though, also about the, um, square footage. So I certainly would be for this, uh, to go forward, however, I think, um, it may, whatever comes out with the, um, ZDA-
Right.
-as to whether or not that's adding square footage and several, but at least it should go forward for consideration.
What do you think?
Myself, I'm for doing nothing on this.
Okay.
I think it's a good plan, but I think our, the way things are situated right now, uh, you know, we got the IT up to the high school. The only problem we seem to have is with the accountant, which isn't really awful bad. But I think our priorities for the town, uh, with the dumps and stuff that we have to cap by state law, and we're gonna have to spend some money up there, I think, putting us off another year or two. I think we can live with what we got right now, so I'm, I'm for not doing anything with this this year.
Okay, to, to answer, I've been told, just to answer Sleckman-Thorpe's concern, I've been told that the square foot issue was going to the planning board on December- that the square foot issue was going to the planning board on December 2nd, and they seem to think that that's not going to be a big issue. It's going to be, you know, it's going to go through. To answer that question, second thing is, I know we have to do something to this building as far as the electrical and, you know, just to keep it running, for lack of a better term. So I don't know if it's, you know, that was phase one of this whole project, so we wouldn't be, even though we're looking for the whole commitment, I don't think that, you know, the first year, I believe, is only the necessities of getting the place up and running, and then second and third would be going on, just to, just to throw that out. I guess, let's see, how can we do this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We move forward with the capital plan for the town.
Okay, so moved.
And you moved it?
Yeah.
So I'll second it.
Unless, okay.
What are you doing, Paul?
We're, we're making a motion to actually go forward with the, with the process.
With the whole project?
Yeah, yeah. So at least just to have them, you know, take a look at it and see if it's feasible. I mean, obviously, we're not the final decision. It's capital planning is, and ultimately, the town, so. All right. And is there any, any more discussion regarding this?
The only discussion I got is I agree with, we may have to get some things done, like electrical and.
Yeah.
But do the whole project.
Well, I'm just thinking, it's going to be over three years, so we're not, you know, at least we get a head start on it. I don't know. You know, it's just, it's just my opinion, so, for whatever that's worth.
Yeah.
You know, because if we like to reinvent the wheel a year or two down the road, then we're going to be five years out getting everything done, so.
As a chair, I would say that, that my understanding is that this is for the full package.
Right.
I don't want to have the delusion that it's just for the electrical.
Right.
It's for the full package, so.
But that would be the first, the first step.
That would be the first phase, right.
Okay. All right. So since you made the, since you requested the motion, I think you have to call for the vote.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And no abstentions?
Nope.
So that motion carries.
All right. Now, the next, the next item is the ladder truck, and I'll, anybody can feel free to speak on this, you know, in regard to this.
I'll get through to the chair.
Yeah.
I did some extensive research on a fire truck.
Yeah.
I went to Springfield, talked to the fire department there. I talked to the mechanics there. I went to the place over by their prison farm there that works on vehicles, and they work on a lot of fire trucks. I mean, it's not as, I know our truck is an 87, and I was told that we couldn't get parts, but I found out we can get any part for that truck. And, you know, I talked to those people, and they take their truck out in Springfield, ladder truck, probably 3,500 times a year, and they got lousy roads, like the guy told me. We're, we're taking our ladder truck out nine to 10 times a year, and to spend a million dollars for that, I mean, if we spent 50, $50,000 to fix the truck, I think we can get a couple more years out of it, myself. I mean, a million dollars is a lot to go out the number of times we use it, in my, in my own opinion.
Yeah, you're correct. I think, the only thing was, I think it said last night that it actually went out like 135 times, but it was only used nine or 10 times, so, you know, but you're right. It only gets put to use, and that's, that is a lot of money per use.
Yes, and like, like the guys in Springfield were saying, their roads are terrible there compared to ours, and that's what beats them a lot, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Selectman Thorpe?
I wouldn't be repeating anything other than what you had said, so.
Okay.
Not to give a damn.
Okay. So I guess the proper thing to do would be make a motion, is, I'd like to make a motion to, entertain a motion to allow the ladder truck to go, to pass through to capital. Not hearing a motion, then the, the item is shut down, for lack of a more intelligent term. The last item is Recreation Department Truck, and once again, I love the fact that we were all planning, and we got, we got Colin to get these quotes and everything, and all of a sudden, at the 10th hour, they get the idea of moving a truck from the fire department over, and, you know, it just sort of throws a monkey wrench into everything, after you've done all the research and you had them do it, you know?
Yeah.
So feel free to, you know, feel free, whoever wants to speak on this matter, too.
Well, the thing is, we brought that up to them before, and they said they were going to turn it in two years down the road. So, and then, like you say, we did all this work of looking into things, but as I got thinking last night, that, that truck is still going to be turned in, whether the wreck department has it or the fire department has it. So what are we gaining by giving it to the wreck department? Because they're going to have to turn it in in a couple of years if it's, if it's as bad as that, you know? Myself, myself, I'm for keeping vehicles five years instead of the way we're doing it right now, for, because our roads aren't that bad. We don't have, we only got four miles across, crossed in Islam Meadow, but I'm, I'm for letting him get the truck for the wreck, because the $5,000 that they were going to get goes toward a new truck, period.
Right.
And if we don't put it toward that truck, it's just going to be out the window, you know? So, and Paul mentioned that they could take that $5,000 and use it to paint the truck, but they can't do that. That money is strictly to buy a new truck. So the friends, I guess, of Recreation, they gave it to them, would pull that money back, you know? So, I mean, that's my opinion. You can't get a truck cheaper than $22,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was about 22, 23. Okay. Selectman Thorpe?
The, with regards to turning it in in two years, I think if the truck were to go to the Recreation Department, they wouldn't be riding it as much, so I don't believe that it would have to be turned in in two years. Also, with regards to, hmm, something else that you had said that I wanted to address, but nevertheless, I think that the Recreation Department, they have this set up. He has gone through quite a bit to get the estimates. He has done due diligence. I think it does warrant going forward. It would be nice to see if he could get some other funds from the Recreation Revolving Fund and see if, just in case we run up against anything in appropriations, maybe that's another thing. Can he use that, those funds for, no? I know he couldn't use it for any employment salaries, but since that would be considered quote-unquote "equipment," are you sure that they wouldn't? I mean, that's a bridge to cross at a later time if we run up against something in appropriations.
The Revolving Fund, the Revolving Fund, the way that account is established, is intended to be just that. They take in fees for participation in appropriate or expenses in appropriate. They use those funds this year, and then they charge a fee for upcoming year. The funds go in, and those funds are expended to maintain those programs going forward, but not necessarily to be purchasing equipment that otherwise would be supporting the entire department.
Okay. All right. We also should check in, because I think there's quite a bit of excess in that account, but nevertheless.
Yeah, that'll be part of the budget.
Yeah, I think so. And so, but as far as the department truck, I think it should move forward.
And, and if I may, I just thought of something that I don't hear, I haven't heard anybody bring up. Suppose we decided to give this truck to the wreck department, give the fire department truck to the wreck department. I don't believe the wreck, the fire department has requested from capital a new pickup.
No.
So they'd be, they'd be out of a truck.
They'd be out of a truck, yeah.
So, okay. So, you know, that's, I think somebody missed that step, but in any event.
Plus, Paul, you know, with 70,000 miles on it, I mean, when you get a truck with that many miles, you're going to, you're going to incur repairs on that.
Right, right.
And I don't think the wreck department is ready to.
Assume those.
Take a truck, they're going to start repairing.
Yeah, true, true. In light of what everyone said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Recreation Department Truck to the Capital Planning Board.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, just make sure if they should, should come, and we want to make sure that that, that vehicle is marked and it's parked in the, either in the police station or at the council waiting somewhere.
Okay.
With a town logo.
Yeah, put a town logo on it, yeah. Okay. All right, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Under new business, we have a request from the Physicians Assistant Students at Bay Path University for a P A, which I assume stands for Physicians Assistant, 5K run on the rail trail Saturday, December 13th at 10:00 a.m. And also, we'll go through the whole thing first, a temporary food service permit, a temporary food service application approved by Don Tooner Health Agent. Approval received by Police, Fire, and DPW. It's pending insurance from Bay Path. Proceeds from the event to help with the cost to attend the National Physician Assistant Conference in California. I'd like to make a motion first to approve the 5K run on the rail trail Saturday, December 13th.
My pleasure to so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Chairman?
Yes.
I believe that the event actually is at 9:00 a.m.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says 10:00 a.m. on my watch.
It does say 10:00.
Okay, 9:00 a.m.
Here, and, well, they want to be there for 9:00.
All right.
Registration at 9:00. I don't know if you want to approve it from that point on.
Okay. We'll register, I'm sorry, I'll amend that to registration at 9:00 a.m., and the real fast runners can get their attack. Okay.
So moved on the amendment.
Yeah, all right. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I make my motion to approve, the main motion to approve the run itself.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll have to make a motion to approve the temporary food service permit.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the last item is the health agent search, which rears its ugly head every day.
Yeah. I'd like to get the committee here to set up an interview for some of the people, or if you want me to go through and get it down to two or three.
What do we, started with, we had eight, but two hadn't applied, right?
Right.
And so we got, so you got six. Yeah, if you want to, if you want to work, maybe in conjunction with Nick, if he's, you know, obviously willing to whittle those six down to maybe.
Thirty.
Three, or if you, if you actually have three qualified candidates, and then, and then we can interview them.
We'll let down to three?
Yeah. Like I said, if you, if you find you don't have three candidates, don't just put somebody on there.